Speaker, that's set up as the default instead of this one and so it's not capturing the closed caption, which now it is, which tells me it's working now. Okay, so let me just connect that one back up.
Speaking, also it is the default.
That's true.
On the YouTube.
We're still have to find out just in time.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
There's two of them, actually, one there and one off there. You have. You good? I think we're good. Okay.
Excellent. And so just we're encountering a new situation this evening that we hadn't encountered before. And I'm just going to throw a quick motion on the table, but I'm just gonna make a motion that we not as counselors have our videos on when we're in person. It just takes away from the audience's ability to see the rest of us when they're observing virtually. I'm sorry, I just want to make the motion that we not have that we not show our video as individuals in when we're in person. If I get a second, I can give my reason.
Second.
Okay. And then I'll just speak to that. And it's just so that people that are watching at home have a better access to the rest of our video. They can actually see us better rather than seeing two different videos split up. So I just started to leave that construct ready.
The reason why I had it on earlier was because when I have been at home, I liked actually, if I, since it hasn't happened yet, I'm going to tell you that. When I was at home, I didn't like not being able to see everyone's faces. And so I was hoping to try to test this out just to see like, maybe if people like this, then maybe we can invest in like individual cameras or cameras like in between every couple of people to be able to like see each other's faces the way that people can see us here a bit more. I'm just trying to make it a bit more accessible. But I also understand if that is not what council wants.
Thank you.
But for the sake of accessibility, that's the reason.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion as stated, please raise your hand, Sky. All right. I'll oppose, please raise your hands in the air. All extensions. So motion carries four to two to one. Thank you. With that, we're going to move into a public hearing on PC 2208. Oh, wait, I don't want to lose right. So first, we're going to move into a public hearing where we're going to discuss material standards, amendments to material standards. And first, I have a, I have a script here and that I agree from because it walks us through this is because rather complicated. But first, welcome citizens. We're going to be discussing PC 22-08 amendments to Flemish municipal code 18.45.080 material standards and 18.155.030 class B variance. The order of tonight's proceedings shall be first, we're going to go through a staff report. Then we're going to have public testimony. We'll then have city council questions of staff. The council will then deliberate and then we'll offer a final recommendation. For anyone testifying this evening, we ask that you please keep your comments for three minutes. And persons testifying either orally or in writing may request a continuance or a request that the record be held open. These requests should be included in your testimony. With that, the public hearing is now. And before we get started, does any council wish to declare or any potential or actual conflicts of interest? Okay. Are there any objections on jurisdictional grounds, meaning that the city council is not the appropriate body for this hearing? Seeing none. Land use decisions such as this case under consideration this evening are evaluated against applicable statewide planning goals and guidelines and criteria from the land development code and comprehensive plan as presented in the staff report. We will now proceed to the staff report.
Thank you, Honor. I'll be preparing that. Planner Pat Depp is not available this evening, so I'll be filling in on that rule. I'm just going to go through the staff report fairly quickly. That's all been provided to the council in their agenda packet. So I presume that everybody's had a chance to go through that. But just to highlight the decision making criteria on this is any review of the municipal code has to go through the planning commission and through the city council also has to be submitted. We have to give notice to Department of Land Conservation and Development because it is part of the development code. All those notices went out, were done appropriately, went through planning commission, had a public hearing of that process. And now it's coming from the city council with the planning commission's recommendation for approval. So that's where we're in the process. As far as what we're looking at in the review, we're looking at statewide planning goals. We're looking at comments from federal state agencies, which we didn't receive any. Looking at any applicable intergovernmental agreements, which we don't have any that would affect this. Applicable comprehensive plan policies and provisions of the code itself that are implemented in the comprehensive plan. We're looking at compliance with chapter 18.135 of the code, which looks at these plan amendments. I tried to save one too many, sorry. Look at this one. This isn't making sense, but I'm. Sorry, give me half a second here. Yeah. Bottom of page, bottom of the second page for citizen involvement. Talked about reference to the public hearing, spoke to one of the planning commission and the hiring that we're having tonight. So citizens have the opportunity to be involved in these types of changes that are being considered. And we also looked at, Pat took a look at the economy goals and policies because this is affecting industrial lands primarily. Goal number three talks about business retention, development and attraction with a focus on long term residences. Specifically, policy 3.2 states that we want to retain existing employers and focus on attracting new businesses and entrepreneurs that provide above average wages to their employees. And the staff report concludes that these amendments will continue to support the retention of existing businesses, a flexible approach to operation needs. City's manufacturing base. So the conclusion of the staff report and looking at the changes that are being made here to the development code allowing for essentially what amounts to a variance in the material standards is going to comply with not only our current comprehensive plan, but also our current development code. I'll be happy to answer additional questions. We get into deliberation. But as far as the staff report goes, the recommendation is to proceed with the changes as recommended.
So then, are there any preliminary questions of staff at this time from council? There will be an additional, there will be an opportunity to ask additional questions of staff after the public testimony. Council guy.
As I noted in my email this morning, the staff report received September 4th. It needs to be updated with date after September 19th from the planning commission voted on this issue. So for the purposes of the motion, what date should we use?
I believe the staff report from September 14th has all of the analysis that's applicable.
Oh, I apologize, November 4th.
Yeah, November 4th. So the only reason we would update the staff report is if there were changes made by the planning commission. If they made any recommendations or changes to findings, then we'd update it and change it. That said, council guy, it's not uncommon for us to redate it post when the planning commissions looked at it. But it's not necessary. As long as we're referencing the staff report that's in there, it's in here, okay.
Okay. So we will now move to public testimony. Before you make any comments, please sign in with your name and address. Please keep your comments to three minutes and please provide any written materials that you wish to be part of the official record to the recording secretary. And then we have, so we have one person signed up on this item. But if there's any others, please do step forward. So Thomas Van Denden. Do we?
Let's have a drink.
Sit there. Hello. Thank you for being here with us tonight.
I'm the president and one of the founders of Shelter Works. We're a manufacturing company here in Paloma. We started the company in 2006 and have so we're now 16 years in on our business. We make a green building material called fast fall. It's a block that's used for constructing homes and low rise commercial. And maybe in your educational packet, some background on who we are. I do have some cards here I can pass out. Let me prioritize yourself on the product.
Thank you.
So 2006 was a rough time to start a business in the construction world. 2008, we had the greatest recession. It was very, very hard on anybody in the building business. We were we were not successful in that. We had a very rough time for a big deal of our 16 year existence. Thankfully, in 2019, things turned around and we're on a very good growth track now in Paloma. There's a lot of reasons for that. We're making a green building material and there's just more and more awareness of natural home building products in the industry. People are more cognizant of toxins that are in building materials and they want to deal with that. So that's one trend online. Another trend is fire safety. We have a product that has a very high fire rating compared with stick burning and all wildfires and the rebuilding efforts. We are looking for much better resilient ways to build. Another reason that is still in our growth is volatility in one of our businesses. No wonder you know, pricing that's going up and down. When prices quadrupled a year ago March, our phones were zipping nonstop. So we're on a growth track and we want to grow here in Paloma. We're on leased property or at the old Smurfit Mill. And to grow the business, we need more under roof space. Sorry?
Excuse me, 30 seconds.
30 seconds. So, so the tension fabric building that we would like to put up is a very good solution for our business needs. It's portable so that at which time when we have outrung the location we're in, we can remove it and take it to a new location. So thank you for your consideration of this and thank you for the support of the business.
In one moment. Before you step up and step away, are there any questions for the speaker?
So Shelter Works said is based in the area that you want the variance for, is that right?
Yeah.
That's where you are.
Headquarters here in Paloma.
And in our summary, it talks about maybe being a temporary industrial structure. And so there's no timeframe that you have. And so there's no timeframe that you have that it might need to be moved or a permanent structure for that?
Well, right now, that's really depending on business and where things go. This is a great. Technology that built very quickly. In a matter of a few months, we can have a space that we can move into. We're at capacity right now. We need more space to grow.
Thank you. And if I remember correctly, you're on the mill site or really close to the mill site, right behind? Your location, the actual location?
Yeah, we're these from PSYP and Old Smurfit Mill.
Oh, yeah.
So we're just behind the Georgia facility, well, now Interstore facility.
Right. And the site is visible from what?
It's not visible from any, any roadway.
Just from the, just the heavy industrial.
We're tucked way back in that old.
Thank you. Any further questions for the speaker? Thank you very much for your testimony. I really appreciate you being here today tonight. And thank you for doing business in Flumah. Any other speakers that wish to testify? Seeing none. See none, we'll go ahead and. Go like that. Does a counselor have any further questions of staff?
Yes. I'll go ahead and talk to the public here first.
A question of staff? So just, just a basic question. So I think this is great, I'm for it, but is there any downside? By making a variance here, do we set a precedent that would come back to bite us down the road for something less worthy than Shelter Works?
Yeah, so it's a really good question. So I appreciate Shelter Works being here and Tom taking the time. But again, this, just to be mindful, this is a legislative look. So what we're looking at is doing is amending the code. We're not necessarily looking to approve any specific development by Shelter Works or other. He's coming really just an example of a property owner that's come to the city saying. The new material standards that you put in place a year ago. Are preventing me from putting up a type of building that a year and a half ago I would have been able to build in Flumah. Now I can't build in Flumah. Is there a way to get an exemption to that? And so the way when we say exemption or exception in, in code language, it means a variance, right? So we're going to do a variance from the standard. So that's really what the ordinance is doing. It's approving a process by which a property owner. Can apply for a variance from what's normally required. And as long as it meets the criteria there, then they would be approved, or that variance request would be approved, right? So in this case, the criteria that we're looking at specifically in the ordinance. It's got to meet the conditions. A building can't be visible from a public right of way. The primary use of the building has to be for warehousing, storage, distribution or similar use that will have minimal access to the public. And then lastly, all the other development standards for the buildings and industrial zone need to be met in accordance with our current municipal code. So, you know, we're not going to take away from anything, but the material standards that were adopted that would preclude this currently. Is even in industrial areas, the current code calls for a minimum of three different building materials, building materials. So you could have brick, you could have split face, block, you could have wood, you could have, you know, various different types of industrial buildings. But you have to have three different types of materials in that design. And that's so that, you know, if you think of the buildings as an example, if you go up. Bill Mayor's property there, you go up towards like Bashful Bob's, or the boat manufacturer's south of him. Those are great, nice looking industrial buildings, but they've got nice facades. They've got some brick face brick on the bottom. They've got some exposed timbers. Nice roof lines. And so they're a nice looking industrial building as opposed to, you know, it's a steel, steel frame corrugated steel solid building that you would have put up in an old. You know, logging mill fifty years ago, a hundred years ago, right? So the idea was to try to get away from a very, very cheaply built. Industrial structure to something that's going to cost a little bit more money, but it's going to have a little more staying power. The variance comes into play when you've got a site that's an internal lot. That isn't viewable from the public. So people driving by every day aren't going to see it. There's not a lot of public access. You don't have people coming and going, making deliveries all the time. That are going to see it. It's really a back building, used for storage, used for warehousing, that type of thing. And the conversation, the planning commission level was, is there a way to find the variance within the code? That would allow for a type of building in this type of situation. The reality is outside of Shelter Works right now, there's not a lot of other places where you could put a building like this. But in the future, to your question, Counselor Lo, you know, all of the north side of, of the highway going east of town is all industrially zoned. I could foresee a time where that got built up with industrial and or potentially commercial development at some point. And back behind those buildings, not viewable from the highway, you could have a warehousing type building that maybe didn't meet the more rigorous. Material standards that we have for industrial buildings. So. In some ways, it sets a little bit of a precedence, but again, we're not approving this request. We're just approving the. The code language that would allow for a variance for any property owner in the future, as long as they met that criteria.
I have a question. So would there be an expectation that we all, if an applicant comes for us and meets all criteria that we must? We must provide that variance in all cases?
So the way the language reads is, is yeah, I mean, the building material, if it goes through, if. It's got to be based on the criteria, and if it meets that criteria, then yes. There's a little bit of subjectivity as into, you know, viewable from the public way. If you can see the top three inches of the roof. On the other side of the trees, is that viewable from the public right of way? Yeah, but in the spirit of things, would we deny an application? Because you could see the top three inches of the roof line, probably not, right? So there's a little discretion built into this. That discretion is left on the planning official. A type two variances are approved at the staff level by the planning official, which is myself, as a city manager. But any of the decisions made on a type two decision like this. Can be challenged, and they would go then to the city planning commission for review. Challenge isn't the right word. Why is this escaping or not appealed? Thank you. Any decision of the planning official can be appealed to the planning commission. And so there is a due process that applicants could follow.
And if a member of the public was opposed to a particular variance application, would there be an opportunity for them to offer feedback?
There would be. So as part of that type two, there's notice to surrounding property owners, to, I believe, a two hundred and fifty foot radius from the property boundaries and so.
Time for comment.
Right? So it's typically fourteen day period for, for comment. That comment would all come to the planning official, be taken in consideration before a decision was made.
Okay, thank you. I read the language in this as allowing discretion because it doesn't require the city to approve. So the city may approve.
Thank you, Counselor Nielsen.
Are variances like this ever repealed if we find that it's not advantageous to the city? We find historically it doesn't work for us. Are the, is it said and done, or can it be repealed?
You could repeal it the same way we're adopting it. So we would change the ordinance. We would bring the ordinance together and we would change the code language. Yep.
After publisher.
Following the same process we're going through now, right?
Any additional questions for staff? Counselor Kazin.
This is not a question, just a comment as, as to the planning commission, to part in meeting members. This request was presented. And I think I have some unique perspective in that I've been in these structures and working with kind of insult and valley. I can use these types of structures, and even though they are temporary, they're really very attractive and. Last for several years, I believe, so I don't, I, I think this. This recommended code language is a very good thing. Shelter Works actually employs eighteen people, like always at their standard. And they have generous compensation benefits. So I think that as you can see from the staff, somebody that planned commission approved it. I'd like to make a motion that would be pretty good.
So we have a motion made by Counselor Kazin, second by Counselor Lo.
Could I ask one more question? Are these structures inspected or somehow? And is there inspection on these type of safety factors and?
Yeah, they're going to pull a building permit, just like they would any other building, and they have to. They're actually, a lot of these come pre-engineered. So engineering, all that is done by the manufacturer. They come in like a kit almost. And all that engineering is done up ahead of time. So they're looking at a lot of the same provision you do for a stick built or a building that was built on site. Again, I want to be careful. There's nothing in this code language that talks about the building has to be temporary, has to be a tent. The language in the code says that a homeowner, a property owner can apply for a variance to the material standards. It doesn't say it has to be a temporary use. It doesn't say it has to be canvas material. It can be any variance from what's approved in the code right now. And that code right now is the three different building materials. So. Again, I just want to be careful. We're not applying, we're not approving the, what we would foresee coming from Shelter Works as an application. For a variance, and that would go through our land use approval process for the variance, but there's nothing in the language here that would require it to be a canvas or temporary. And any, any variance.
Thank you. Need, any further discussion on the motion at hand? Counselor Kazin. Counselor Lo.
And if I can, take a little discretion, Counselor Kazin, if you don't mind amending your motion possibly to more closely fit the recommended one, just so we get the findings of fact approved.
I know that the recommended motion is follows, I know that the city council adopted findings as presented in the staff report. For the proposed codes amendments in final number two twenty-two dash zero eight. And the amendments approved as the city manager is directed to present them in the city council within the document.
The second approves of the amendment.
Any further discussion?
Counselor Lo. I just think this is a wonderful statement in terms of wanting to encourage the right kind of economic development here. That's one of our goals and. Even though it's not specific to Shelter Works, I mean, the fact that we've got a business that has a number of employees that Counselor Kazin said. I think this sends a good message that we are willing to be flexible for the right reasons. Thank you.
Yeah, it would have been easy to say no.
Right.
Right? It would have been easy to say, planning commission just approved this a year ago. We have material standards. Sorry, take your business elsewhere if you don't want to completely comply with our standards, right? I will commend our planner, Pat Deppa, looked really hard to try to find good language that would allow for this type of a variance and to make it work. So again, I think it is, Counselor Lo, I appreciate those comments and I'll pass those on to Mr. Deppa to. Try to find a way to support our local businesses and continue to grow and develop without adverse effects on the community, right? Nobody's going to drive by this building and say, why did the city let that new building go up? It's horrible, right? Nobody's going to see this buildings for warehousing, for, for storage. I think it's a win win. So I appreciate your comments.
So seeing no further comments, all in favor of passing the recommended, with the motion as stated, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Excellent.
So I've been asked to present an ordinance. Here's the ordinance. I will say that we do need to correct that ordinance number. I apologize. The. The agenda is correct. It's ordinance number eight hundred and seventy, but the ordinance itself, page one or two states it as ordinance eight sixty-nine. So that's a typo. It is ordinance eight seventy. Thank you to Ruth for finding my error and correcting us.
And so with that ordinance, consider whatever now.
Can you like me read it or roll?
Sure.
This is ordinance number eight seventy, an ordinance amending Flumah municipal code sections eighteen point four five point oh eight oh material standards. In the heavy industrial zone in eighteen point one five five point oh three oh, class B variances.
Got it. And so with that, we could pass that ordinance at this moment with a roll call vote.
Ask if there's any questions about the ordinance specifically.
So are there any questions on, or they say number eight seventy as presented? Seeing none, we can go ahead and take a roll call vote.
Jessica Gendrata, yes. Governor Visco. I'm sorry. Yes. With causing, yes. Matt Lehman.
Yes. Yes.
Here's Nielsen.
Yes.
Yes. Excellent. So with. So with that, we have another public hearing.
Good Mayor Jones on that. So it's a unanimous motion. It's approved. It'll be effective thirty days. So Tom, you can see me this week sometime if you want to come. We could entertain the application, get it started. We're just going to approve it until. The ordinance got it, got in there, but you could get it in and we could start that approved process for you.
But if you wanted to appeal it.
You had standing to appeal.
Satisfied with this decision can appeal to state land use board of appeals within twenty-one days to date the decision. But he could appeal it. I, we don't have.
So I was, I was getting ready to skip that last statement in this script, so. Hold you back. City attorney prevented me from making that mistake. So with that, we're having. A public hearing on PC twenty-two dash zero six, chapter four, urbanization amendments. So first, thank you very much. Again, the order of tonight's proceedings shall be that we'll have a staff report followed by public testimony. We'll have counsel questions to staff, counsel deliberations and final recommendations. For anyone testifying tonight, please keep your comments to three minutes. People testifying either orally or in writing may request a continuance or a request that the record be held open. These requests should be included in your testimony. In the public hearing. Does any counselor wish to declare a potential or actual conflict of interest? Seeing none, does any, are there any objections on jurisdictional grounds? Meaning that the city council is not the appropriate body for this hearing? Seeing none there, land use decisions such as this case under consideration this evening are evaluated against applicable statewide planning goals and guidelines. And criteria from the land development code and comprehensive plan as presented in staff report. Which we will now proceed to.
Great. Thank you, Honored. Again, apologies, Mr. Depp couldn't be here. He, he's got this staff report memorized. Mayor presented a little, presented a little bit of background already with the completion of the housing needs analysis. Where the, one of the sections that we looked to update was the housing. Chapter, which we did previously, but also looking to update the urbanization chapter of the comprehensive plan. To reflect the findings in the housing needs analysis. As you'll recall. Those findings in the housing needs analysis say that the city has sufficient land for our needs as our population is projected out for the next twenty years. And so the city is not looking at any type of urban growth boundary expansion. It's that expansion of the urban growth boundary that would really draw our attention to the urbanization chapter and our urbanization policies. And so because we're not needing to expand their growth band at this time. The planning commission really just took kind of a cursory look at the urbanization chapter. Did go through those policies. It has been several years since they've looked at them. So we did look at some recommended language. From our consultant, we looked at some other cities and the language that they had, and then staff made several recommendations as well. We did include kind of the first paragraph or two that explained the purpose of the urbanization chapter, something that was missing and that, or that is missing in the current comprehensive plan. I just explained to somebody picking it up off the shelf, a little bit about what the chapter does and why it's important. So those are kind of the summary of the, the steps there. As far as criteria, anytime we're updating the comprehensive plan, that criteria is laid out in the plan itself. We're looking at other policies that may support or contradict it. First and foremost was the public engagement. Again, we held a public hearing at the planning commission level. Public was given an opportunity to comment. We gave proper notification of this public hearing tonight, with the public being. Uh, public was given opportunity to comment. We gave proper notification of this public hearing tonight, with the public being uh, given the opportunity to provide commentary as well. So we've met those. We also notified Department of Land Conservation Development, gave them time to review the comprehensive plan and provide comment. We didn't receive any negative comment from them, so we've kind of got a green light from them to move forward as well. Uh, statewide planning goals, um, dictate, they've got, they've got, um, some minimum recommendations as far as what needs to be included in our urbanization chapter. Uh, staff's gone through and reviewed those and um, has found that the new language in the urbanization chapter meets all of those state requirements. Also found that the proposed urbanization policies in the plan um, comply specifically with state planning goal fourteen under urbanization. Found that, um, I just mentioned Department of State lands on the notice number three or number four. Uh, application comprehensive plan policies and provisions of the code that are, uh, to implement the comprehensive plan. Uh, the, the, the language provided is compliant with Floma Municipal Code eighteen one oh five. Um, and the applicable comprehensive plan policies identified by review of the documents, specifically citizen involvement, which I already mentioned. Um, and the planning commission review, um, looking at um, how often the plan's updated. Every five years, it's been well over that since it was looked at last. Um, looking at the conference plan map or text amendments taking place courts with the city's public hearings procedures, which we've done. And the pub, planning commission, city council, holding those public meetings, which again, we found they've done. So in the staff report, we look at is the recommended language and the processes followed compliant with the state planning goals and with our own municipal code. And in both instances, uh, the staff report concludes that it, it does. And it has. Um, and with that, the report, the staff report is to go ahead and approve the amendments to chapter four urbanization. Do you have to answer any specific questions about the staff report now, or I can answer more general questions later? Thank you.
Any brief questions for city manager, Counselor Kazi?
This is going to be ordinance number eight seventy-one. Yes, thank you. The agenda is correct, the numbering is incorrect.
This is what happens when I leave town.
Yeah, you can never go again.
So I know part of the requirements for updating the comprehensive plan were to do the housing needs analysis, next number, analysis, blah, blah, blah. All that stuff, and we don't need to dig into that. Almost the end, but there's some terminology in here that says shall rely upon. And we've had this discussion in other chapters also, and I'm wondering if there's maybe appropriate language we could use instead of shall rely upon. Because most of the people in this room are dubious about the effectiveness of that report that we must rely on.
Yeah, I think it's a fair comment. Fitz, Counselor Andrade made an email um, earlier this morning, kind of similar. I don't have opposed to pulling those back to may utilize. I mean, the fact is as we update the urbanization, we're going to be looking at what's on the ground today. We're going to go back and look at the analysis that's been done. Um, there's going to be consideration of what was in those reports and when they were done and what the timeframes were. Um, and then we'll be looking at, you know, other sources as well, current population data as opposed to data that was in place when the HNA was done, right? We'll look at current data and, and those, but the organization at the end of the day is really about um, the amount of billable land you have in total, and then your population forecast going out. Those are really the two big variables.
So that was part of the reason for that. My, my question is that just wondering if this is one of those situations where if we wanted to adjust the UGB, we have to use that report as justification, or if we can use that and additional information such as, you know, common sense, blocking outside kind of stuff.
We can't use common sense because we're dealing with the state. We do use, we, we would, we are required to use the numbers from Portland State University's population forecasting, right? So we're required to use the numbers that were given from them. Um, we're required to use our current zoning, right? But I foresee as part of the process of updating the comprehensive plan is going to be updating the comp, um, the zoning map as well. And I imagine we're going to have some changes in that zoning and those changes are going to affect how much land we have available in R three versus the R two versus the low density. So as those numbers get changed, it's going to change the amount of housing we have for the number of people we have coming in, right? If we have as an extreme example, if half of our low density residential gets converted to high density residential, we're going to have sufficiently more land for housing to come in than what we currently do because it all got upzoned essentially to higher density. So those numbers are going to fluctuate. Um, it would be silly for us to rely solely on the housing needs analysis, right? We're going to look at what are the numbers today. And in fact, the state is going to make us get updated numbers and go off the numbers that are present at that time. The zoning that's there at that time, the land available at that time, so. I don't know if that's directly answering your question. It's not going to be the only document that we look at. It is, we are going to look at the housing needs analysis historically for the data that was adopted and approved at that time. But the state's not going to approve us just turning in our housing needs analysis documents saying, look, we need more housing, or we needed more housing five years ago. They're going to require updated data anyway. Um, so if we need to change the language in here to, to may use or may in addition to other sources, shall also use whatever, I'm, I'm fine with any of that type of language. So if we want to nitpick through the, I don't mean that negative, if we want to pick through the ordinance and find those corrections, we can do those, or we can bring it back to you. I'm not sure how many there are, honestly.
And so after we conclude the public hearing, then um, the recommended motion does include opportunity for him to present a, uh, adopting ordinance, kind of off the guidance. So any other quick questions for city staff? Seeing, oh, Counselor, Counselor Visco.
So I just have one on, um,
Not quite sure we're here. I'm, I'm on the current comprehensive policies, number three.
It's also in the second paragraph.
So I have attachment B, agenda item, the pages are not numbered, so it's at the very top, says current comprehensive plan policies. One and direct two. Um, it mentions residential lands needs analysis. That's a different language than I think we've heard before.
I think that's what they used to call it back when this policy was adopted, whatever the twenty years ago was, so.
What is that? Besides the document we're using for this?
I think that's referring to the, there was a regional residential lands and needs analysis that was done uh, with, in conjunction with Benton County. So it was Benton County, um, Corvallis, Floma, the Dare Village, I think they were all done together. If you remember, I think there's references in the housing needs analysis uh, that referenced historically, that referenced that document and some of the downfalls of only having a regional housing needs analysis completed. I'm assuming that's what that's referring to, Counselor.
Is this equivalent to the global ones?
It'd be more equivalent to the housing needs analysis.
Okay, in that case, should this one be updated as it refers to this particular, um?
So on the next page, attachment C, this is the proposed comprehensive plan policies. That's what we're looking to change it to. So you have what's existing. And then on attachment C is everything that we're proposing, and that language should be updated to reference the um, correct documents. No, I don't think that's the same terminology. I don't think we're using that terminology anymore in any of the new stuff. Um, I'm looking at on attachment C, like line thirty, it refers to the housing needs analysis, economic needs analysis completed two thousand twenty-one. Urban growth management agreement with Benton County, that was new language as well. That was, that document language got updated, so I believe all of that language has been updated.
Thank you, Counselor Andrade.
And so I guess to kind of bounce off of that, because this residential land needs analysis was used in, do I understand correctly, was being used in the building of the housing needs analysis? Because it did exist.
I think it was referenced as, that's what was used twenty years ago, and now we're updating that with the housing needs analysis. I don't think the data was used. It was just references in historic document. Yeah.
And so, yeah, so we're replacing attachment B with attachment C.
Yeah.
So with that, we're, should we just go ahead and have a public hearing, or are you?
So to the Council of Cleveland's point also about the housing needs analysis, the document that was drafted and approved by this council to be attached to that doesn't reference that in here, and that necessarily suggests that it needs to, but is that document about some of the concerns about the housing needs analysis, is that document part of the housing needs analysis as it refers to this document?
The I'm trying to remember the exact language. I don't think we amended the housing needs analysis to say C addendum two, but we did include the addendum to it that references back to the housing needs analysis. So by reference, I would say yes, that would be included as well. If the council wanted to provide something similar for this chapter, we could, like a asterisk to reference back, but um, at some point, we're creating a circle that gets, I think it makes it hard to, for people to reference a little bit, but your points will take. And I, I don't, again, I don't know that we made that specific change to thousand needs analysis, so that people would know that there's the addendum, it's just in there right after it.
Counselor Kazi.
With respect to the previous discussion about not letting the reliance to the housing needs analysis and the economic needs analysis, it appears that the only place that's references in policy one point three.
Words with something while we're in between this and ordinance?
Okay, so with that, we'll go ahead and open public testimony. Well, now, before you make comments, please sign in with your name and address. Please keep your comments to three minutes. And please provide any written materials that you wish to be part of the official record to the recording secretary. Does anyone wish to speak regarding this application? I agree. Anybody? Okay. Oh. We'll go ahead and close the hearing. And does any counselor have any further questions of staff?
I would like to know if Counselor has a recommendation regarding the discussion about the, um, potential referencing back to the other documents versus adjusting language or accompanying.
Because the council has reservations about the housing analysis, it makes sense to me that if that analysis is referenced in the urbanization chapter, that reservation ought to be recognized in some fashion. Doesn't matter, I don't think, if it's just a reference back to you know, the, the housing analysis, including the supplement, I don't, I don't remember how we described that document. But that, that's I'm sorry.
It's described as exhibit B in the appendix.
So, uh, uh, to, to that analysis, that, that seems like that would be easy way to reference it. If you do it once, that, that's always what that means in this chapter two.
Any additional questions for staff? So we have recommended motion.
So policy one point three, this is on attachment C, so this is what we'll be looking to approve with the, with the findings here. Um, attachment C, policy one point three, line thirteen. Here's where I'm at, may not be perfect yet. Uh, the city of Floma shall rely upon current data as well as the housing needs analysis, economic needs analysis completed in twenty twenty-one, and appendix B to the comprehensive plan as the justification for the size and location of their growth boundary.
Sounds good. Did you write it down?
Yeah. I got Ruth.
With recommended motion.
We probably want to motion to approve that amendment.
We have to have the original motion first.
Yes. I'll make a motion that the city council adopt the findings as presented in the staff report for the proposed amendments after four urbanization, the city's comprehensive plan as rejected in file number PC twenty-two dash zero six. And that the amendments be approved, and that the city manager is directed to present to the city council an adopting ordinance as amended.
As follows.
As follows.
Policy one point three, to read, the city of Floma shall rely upon current dates as well as the housing needs analysis, economic needs analysis completed two thousand one. And appendix B of the comprehensive plan as the justification for the size and location of the urban growth boundary.
The motion.
Data, dates. Thank you.
And so a motion made by myself, seconded by Counselor Nielsen. Any further discussion? Counselor Andrade.
And does that matter?
Um, thank you. It's appendix B. Appendix B, no, it's exhibit B and appendix housing as appendix A. So, and appendix and exhibit B of appendix A of the comprehensive plan.
You'll get it right. Thank you. Any further questions for staff? Or discussion? None, all in favor of passing the motion as stated, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye, motion carries unanimously. Wonderful. But I will mention that any participant not satisfied with this decision may appeal to the state land use board of appeals in twenty-one days of the state of decision.
Counselors asked that I present ordinance number eight seventy-one? It's near packet.
And so the amendment that was just made, would that be represented here or no?
It is, because it's, I, I think we're good as this sits because it's referencing the stuff was already proved.
Exhibit A is what was just approved and amended by the council.
Okay. Good. Got it. And so we go ahead and do a first reading?
This is ordinance number eight seventy-one, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan as adopted by ordinance four nine three and amended by ordinance seven twenty to approve and adopt chapter four, organization or urbanization, excuse me, uh, as just a minute.
Any? Any discussion?
In the second, whereas she referred to the same appendix.
In that same statement, I wonder if we should, as this is an ordinance, I wonder if we should spell out come, plans that have come, spelled comp as comprehensive. So, yeah, I'll make a motion to amend that motion to change word comp to comprehensive. So with that, we're just going to vote on the amendment to the motion. I'm all in favor of amending the motion as stated, please raise your hands, say aye. The motion that I just made. I changed the word comp to comprehensive. In the second, whereas. So all in favor of making that amendment, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye, a motion carries unanimously there, so now we have a motion on the table to. As made by councillor Coffee. Any further discussion on that? All in favor of carrying, passing that motion as stated, please raise your hand and say aye. With that, we'll have a roll call.
Rosie, yes.
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 Yes. Great. And so. We have, we have. But first of all, Julie Jackson, you get? But first, before we go there, we do have public comment in general. If anyone would like to provide public comment today? As it's all the comments. Yeah, I think so, go ahead.
Is there any comment or any discussion on the veteran part?
Would you like to comment on that?
Yeah, I would.
So this will be your time, um, does he, does he have a form to fill up?
And we can take, well, we can take comment now, or you could take the comment during that agenda item as well, if the council like, you can do it either way.
Yeah, I just didn't know if there was time for it.
Okay, we can wait. Any other comment, councillor Andrade?
While I appreciate that, I know we have talked about this in the past before, where I have. What kind of asked that, like if we could have time for people to speak for different. Agenda items, I was told that that would get.
The possibility of getting out of hand.
It comes to that at some point in the future, not that I'm a poster.
Yeah, I am more than happy to pick up all the comment now. Why don't we just go ahead and do that? Yeah, so.
Reason why I came up is I am a veteran, you know, it stuck out to me from a veteran myself. In the design review process, I was just wondering if the city was reaching out to any veterans organizations. And then if they, they were who was, and if there's any local veterans organization that are tied into this. Design of the park. Also to look that with the sign of the park. Is it a park with, I would say, theme, but is a purpose of this park a reflection park, a relaxation park, or is it a play park?
Thank you for that. And I should have read, I have a blurb that I should have read before you spoke, but things got a little bit out of hand. But we don't typically respond now, but we will respond to that, and you're welcome to continue speaking, but we'll respond to that when we're discussing the topic.
Just real quick, Chelsea's going to cover a lot of them, her report, going through it, so she'll answer most of those questions that time, if you want to hang.
With our council rules. So, sorry, and if there's anyone else who'd like to speak, comment. Then I will go ahead and close that out, and we will move on to presentation by the public services, Julie Jackson. Thanks for being here, I appreciate it.
Appreciate the opportunity, I'm Julie Jackson, I'm municipal manager for Republic Services. This area. As you know, this is about the time of year I usually come to you, we talk about. Some of the things that are happening, some of the trends we're seeing, and also about rate adjustments. So you have. That we are asking for four percent rate adjustment across the board, residential, commercial, and industrial. One of two. Branches that we hold that breaks it out, and sometimes those are different, and in fact, always those, we call them lines of business are different rates. Because they're facting in differently, the calculation is made differently according to the rate modification document that we. They do adopt in, I think in two thousand thirteen. If you look up above, you can see what those would have been had we used that document, but we have. Sort of looked at. The unusual economic times that we're in, we are using our best crystal balls to talk about. And look at fuel costs. Increases this year are primarily driven by three things, fuel cost, commodity markets, which I can touch on a little bit for recycling. And then labor costs. And we have decided that four percent is a fair amount just across the board, which is about a dollar fourteen per residential customer. So that's where we are with that, do you have, are there questions about that part of it, would you like me to stop there?
Not the question, but thank you for clarifying that, because I wasn't sure how to interpret the top paragraph. The second, so that, so, so that's a big disparity though for republic, so if you're saying you're holding the line to us with four percent. How do you square that at the business end that you can do that?
We have been looking at fuel prices as we put this together, fuel pricing was going down pretty significantly after been. Being at almost record highs. So you get the benefit of that crystal ball that we didn't have at that point, and then we saw fuel prices go back up, and as you can see, they're coming back down. And we think they're going to be volatile for some time, and we just don't know where that's going to land. We also had a driver shortage a year ago, and I was asked in another city council meeting if that didn't save us money, but. In reality, your cars don't need to be picked up whether we have. Forty drivers or whether we have thirty drivers, and so we incur a lot of overtime when we are short drivers. And that can be very, very expensive, I'm really happy to tell you that we have increased driver wages by three dollars an hour for starting drivers. To really pull in some good people, and that's been effective, takes a little while to get those people trained and on the road, but we're almost fully staffed now. And we are doing our best to keep it that way, so we see that being. A real positive, and then the other thing that we talked about is recycle commodities, and of course, recycle commodities last spring, we were starting to see. When I say come down, you know. Ten years from now, even less than that, in two thousand sixteen, we used to get paid for recycling. A little bit, not a lot, but if you want to use round numbers, let's just say, on average, maybe fifty dollars was the range, well. In two thousand seventeen, with the China sort initiative and recycling sort of got turned on its head, and we went from getting paid to paying for recycling. That volatility has continued, but we did start to see some improvement last spring, and we're now at an all time high. So we are paying more to recycle over almost a hundred dollars a time. So we're paying more to recycle now than ever before, so there's a lot of volatility in recycling, and I think it has to do with the fact that. Get the kind of slowdown in the economy has caught up to the mills who are using those materials to create. Boxes for all of the electronics that are being sold, they just simply don't need as much material, so they can be really choosy, and they don't have to pay. As much for, so the predictions are that that volatility will last. Certainly through the end of the year, and we still know, we don't know what's going to happen, but those really are the three drivers that we wanted to talk about.
Thank you. Any questions, councillor Nielsen?
Do you have any timeline for, it talks about electric fleet of trucks, do you have a timeline, a goal or anything that you said for that?
We do, I am really proud, our company has invested really heavily in electrification of our fleet. Our goal is within about the next eight years to electrify most of the fleet across the country, and that's a lot of trucks. They're hard to get right now, but most of the industry is looking at about three years to actually get a truck from the time it's ordered. We're looking at about eighteen months to twenty four months, because. We're working with all the big truck manufacturers, we're trying to get the best of the best trucks that can come in, so right now. We have about five electric trucks operating in Boise, that's kind of our, one of our test markets on the west coast. They are working like a charm, I get to ride in one, it's an amazing experience, like the biggest golf cart you've ever been. It's just literally doesn't make any noise. And of course, the environmental aspects are just really, really wonderful, we know that right now. We're just on the verge of being able to operate them here and in the Corvallis area. By, within five years, we know that all of our routes, the generation that will be available, and we understand. How many miles they'll be able to get on a charge, within about five years, we believe, and really closer to four, because in twenty twenty seven. We think all of our routes will be able to be run on electric vehicles, and so. If you know me, this is one of my bucket list items, and I have been really bothering corporate people a lot about this. And I will continue to do that for the next couple of years, and I think we'll start to see some in maybe three, four years in this area. So I'm very excited about it.
Thank you, councillor Cosby?
A couple of questions, where you went is, you know, you described the polymer center that is. Will that allow us to use that go more than ever?
That really is the hope, so the idea behind this polymer center that Republic is building. This is the first one, and there'll be five across the country at some point, but. What our company knows really well is that the west coast does probably the most sustainable job. In terms of recycling and on the cutting edge of organic collection. Vehicles and all recruiting stuff on the ones we hear in the west, so they built the first one in the west, and I know Las Vegas doesn't. Ne- necessarily seem like it's real local, but if you compare that to plastics going to China, it's really local. And that's kind of what we're looking at, the company has decided that they are creating plastic circularity, so the idea is. By taking this material in and resorting plastics, and that's how we hope to get Oregon plastics. To Nevada, it will go to the sorting facility in Clackamas that it goes to now. And then plastics can be shipped down to the facility, resourced, higher technology. It's a big market, so they, you know, it's kind of an economy of scale, we just don't have enough people in Oregon to have that kind of technology in Oregon. But we can put it in down there, and then we can sort all kinds of plastics, and the hope is, the model is that will create markets. So if we take in available water bottles, for example. Currently, water bottles are being downcycled into things like carpet and polyfibers. Because they just can't get a clean enough stream, we'll be able to take those water bottles, we'll wash them, we'll pelletize that plastic or break that plastic. And have it ready to go right back to manufacturer of water bottles. So it's upcycling memories, not that we, we don't like what's happening now, we do like that. We like that things are getting recycled, but we think we'll be able to upcycle material, and in that way, create markets for material that we just don't have now. Because that's really why plastics, certain plastics aren't recycled, one, they can't be sorted, two, there's no market for the material. So we know we have to create markets. Yes, in fact, I just read something today about. Well, you probably read it too about Oregon state developing electric batteries that don't have the caustic materials that don't have. That aren't just difficult to recycle, and certainly, we're staying on top of all of that, because we know a little bit about disposing.
My last question, when my constituents asked if they could use a smaller container than the smallest. For trash, yes. People just don't generate that much trash.
Well, we have a twenty gallon trash cart, and that's pretty small, that's about the size of a bathroom garbage can. And they may not be aware of that, the problem with anything smaller is. The truck just can't pick it up, and so the cost to pick one of those up to send something around where a person got out, it would be more expensive than the biggest cart probably. And we, we did at one point, you know, the little organic containers that some people have, we did have something to put one of those out, it's occurred one day, but we can't pick those up. So cart size is about as small as it can get, if you get a twenty gallon cart, it's going to look just like a thirty two gallon cart, but we'll pop, rivet a. A smaller container into it.
And noting that we are getting short on time, we do have a long agenda still, but you have another question briefly?
So if the sixteen people that you, that you've hired, do you know if anybody's from Floma that might be part of your workforce? That was good news to know that.
One of the really hard things about COVID for me is that I'm not as close with the drivers as I always have been, and I hate that part. We have always had drivers in Floma, and I believe we do, but I will check on that in a minute. But we know it's a different job than it was twenty years ago, so it's a little weird.
Thanks, thank you very much for being here with us, I really appreciate you coming and chatting with us about your plan, rating piece. It's eight thirty five, we always aim to be done by nine thirty with our agenda, but let's just go ahead and take a five minute break. Come back at eight forty.
Check one, two. Nope, we're good.
Okay. With that, we now have, we're going to have, um we're going to get back to some unfinished business, talking about the franchise agreement with Alarca Networks. Chris, want to kick us off?
Again, so city council looked at this last month. The request from the council was to change the ordinance, the telecommunications ordinance, back to the original fee schedule, which was seven percent or seven hundred fifty dollars per month, whichever was greater. We went back and made that revision. We also took out some of the language at the end there that said it had to be by check and it had to go to the um finance director. We opened that up so it can be checked or payment or whatever they want to do to get that payment to us. We're open. So we tweaked that language primarily. And then we also um looked at Mr. Brewer and I started looking at the language and trying to differentiate between the fiber portion of the business Alarca was doing, which is their primary desire to have the franchise fee agreement and their wireless service that they've been providing for years that doesn't infringe upon the public right of way, and how the ordinance could be tweaked to best to best support that. We came up with a solution. We put that solution into the packet. We put it in front of Alarca. Alarca got back to us after the packet went out and said, you know, we see what you did here. There's a lot of tweaks. What may be easier is just to tweak the definition in letter J. Um so tonight, you receive that copy of that updated agenda item summary. It was emailed out to the council last Thursday, in addition to the ordinance that Alarca presented with that more minor change than what Mr. Brewer and I had submitted. Um so again, we're, we're, what we're looking at tonight is ordinance eight seventy-two. The number in on this one is correct. Sometimes when the earth leaves, I can get things right. Um so ordinance eight seventy-two. Um we're looking at, the fee structure has been tweaked as re- as requested by the council, and then a new definition for telecommunications services. That's the middle section there to say utilizing facilities traversing the public way, uh which means to say anything that's inside that public right of way uh is going to be what's covered under the franchise agreement and the franchise fee. We like the change. That change went back to Mr. Brewer. He reviewed it, said, yes, that's another way to do it. Again, six half dozen one way or another. Um won't talk about skinning cats, because that's mean. We like the change. That change went back to Mr. Brewer. He reviewed it, said, yes, that's another way to do it. Again, six half dozen one way or another. Won't talk about skinning cats because that's mean, but essentially covers the same material. So the ordinance before you has been reviewed by Alarica. Guy, what is your first name? Excuse me. Scott, that's right, guy, sorry. I've gone through, to be fair, I've gone through three Alarica. But Scott from Alarica is here this evening. I'm sure he can answer your specific questions if those come about, but that's kind of its simplicity. Sounds like Alarica is agreeable with this current format of the ordinance and looking for the council to go ahead and approve that, but have to answer your questions council might have on those changes.
So really we're removing the word fiber from any references now telecommunications.
Correct. It's back to the original, which is just all telecommunications, but it's telecommunications that utilize facilities traversing publicly.
Any further comments?
Just to clarify, I believe that once this ordinance is approved, that it will be administered by the city. And the council would not expect to see it again unless there were a public hearing.
The council could have a public hearing on it, but really any, when it's renewed, that will become the city council. We are looking at most likely doing an audit. We've talked to Scott about this. After the first year, we'd probably pay to have an audit done. So we'll need to talk about that come budget season, what that cost would be. That for you, but we'd want to go and just check their books, make sure it's being accounted for correctly that first year. We can do an audit anytime we feel like something's out of whack or something drops or raises or raises suspicion. We can do an audit at any time. But outside of an audit or a renewal process, I'm sorry, I want to come back to the council. We just, I typically just administer those.
Is the finance director involved in that audit or, I mean financially?
We would hire a third party auditor. Yeah, yeah. It wouldn't be city staff, you know, we'd hire somebody neutral to do that.
So councilor.
Could you clarify the reasons for an audit? Is that something that's normally done or is that something we've done with other providers as well on a regular basis?
Yeah, there's language in the franchise agreement itself that, there's actually quite a bit of language in the franchise agreement that allows for an audit. It talks about who pays for it, under what conditions the franchisee could actually pay for it. If there is a discrepancy and it's more than a certain amount, then it actually goes to owners and the cost of that audit actually falls on the franchisee. So there's language in there. I think it's just best practices for a new franchisee to look at those a year into it. I think it gives kind of comfort to the city and also comfort to the franchisee that they're doing it correctly and it's meeting the city standards. So it's a best practices, but it's not in the agreement itself.
And so my question also was, have we done this for other of our providers?
We've not done an audit on any other franchisee since I've been here, but we've not had any new franchises in that time either. So I think it's a good idea for new ones. It's not a bad idea for existing ones. But there is a cost to the city. I mean, for, you know, if we were to do it for an audit of say Pioneer or Xfinity, somebody that's been doing these for a long period of time. You know, maybe we find something and it's not a bad practice to do one every once in a while, but there's a cost to the city to do them. So.
I might add that in the past, we have audited the addresses involved with the other franchises agreements, particularly consumer power, Pacific Power, and request verification that all addresses are correctly being included.
Got it. Thank you.
So my other question is, Chris came to us, I think now two years ago, or we've discussed with this a couple of times. And there was some legal justification and, I hope you've been touched with that. That doesn't appear to any longer exist with this agenda item summary. I wonder if you've got any perspectives. Are we, is there any risk to the requirements that you don't mind in those first meetings? Since I've no longer seen that in this version.
Yeah, but the concern that we had was the telecommunications act, which is intended to reduce barriers to entry. And so one of the things that, one way to do this is if the franchise holder is satisfied with it, it must not be a barrier to entry. What we would want to be careful about is that we're not creating barriers for others to enter, but I don't believe that the change in the definition, for example, create a barrier to entry for other telecommunications providers.
I move to approve the franchise agreement with Alarica Networks as presented.
Excellent. Any further discussion?
We'll first have a roll call vote on the on the ordinance.
So we withdraw the motion?
I would recommend withdrawing the motion.
Maybe you could withdraw the motion. All the motion is.
I withdraw the motion. Did I put a motion on there?
On the back of that with the franchise.
Just wanted to have a straw poll. So go ahead and. This is ordinance number 22-872. An ordinance granting to Alarica Networks a non-exclusive franchise for the provision of telecommunications services within the city of Fulham.
Okay, so.
Yes. Heather Visco, yes. Bruce Housen, yes. Natalie.
Yes.
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 Yes. Excellent. That's. Thank you. And so now we have the ordinance. Can we do that again?
That was.
Okay, we're done there. It's been a long month. With that, we now have. Chelsea, wanna talk about Tochrin Veterans Memorial Park?
Yes. First of all, I want to thank park members, ladies and gentlemen, and Carol Leach for sitting through the meeting to present or to support the Tochrin Industries Memorial Park Park Advisory Board. Has worked pretty hard on this project for longer than I've been here. So I just wanted to acknowledge them for being here. And so I do have a little bit of a PowerPoint mostly for the people who don't have the pictures or the council members that want to look up at the screen, but this is the concept design that we talked about in June at the June 13th meeting that Scott and the Park Advisory Board have been working on to bring in the community input from the American Legion group and other veterans organizations and the community survey that was put out that was open to veterans and community members. And then the Park Advisory Board also includes the general concept of memorial itself that it did come to council in June. And to speak to the questions that came up in public comment. And this is a park that we hope to encompass several aspects for the community. This area of town, the northeast part of town does not have any parks and it is, this isn't directly in the neighborhood. So the hope is to take the community input, which did include many aspects of the park. We were able to put most of the features into the park for the memorial area and the rest of the surrounding park areas that were in the community survey that there were some votes to make a park that will hopefully be multi-generational and will have multiple uses so that when it's not being used for the contemplating area, it can also be used for the neighborhood to enjoy as well. So we can go through the slide here. This is a general overview that shows your view driving Weston College Street and also get to, it included some slides from the designer explaining her choices on this and she says it a little better than I do, but we'll just go through these slides first. So you can see that the memorial is set in a way that you will look through and see the memorial from that direction on College Street. This is more of an overview. I do want to point out on these slides because the question came up to the Park Advisory Board and I think from council as well is that the grassy looking areas that look like they're tall are not necessarily. This is not a landscape plan. It's just general. This is where you could put plant materials. So it does look a little strange, especially when you're looking at it down close. It looks like the grass is about two inches tall. So you can see in this picture, the memorial area, I will note that that area has been centered with the bench seating. So in this drawing, it was slightly off center. But we asked to have things refigured a little bit to center that. It does have the three flag poles, which as we discussed with the back from the neighborhood, that those will be used for special events and will not have flags all of the time because the neighbors are concerned about the noise of the flag poles, but they'll, they will be there for events. And we've put in an access point to the flag poles as well to make it easy for whatever the groups are trying to access to the flag to get there. And so you see that nice large area that allows some room for even if there are additional chairs that needs to be brought in. I've seen that before where you make a smaller veterans memorial area, but you not allow adequate room for people for events. This, we did make sure that that was there. And in front of the memorial itself, there is an area to have the, the community survey. A lot of people said that they wanted to see flowers. So that is an area that we could potentially put it falls or something from the womb, maybe even during the time of year where you would have veterans, veterans in memorial events. Near the rear of the park is a pavilion. That pavilion is not the actual pavilion that we're looking at, the pavilion that we're looking at is a wood structure by the Timber Framers Guild. That was just what the designer had to put in there. And then the question of the park, yes, there's some play equipment included. When we get to the other side, I can explain the designer's concept on that. So this is a little bit more difficult, Steve, but it's an overview, just kind of showing that from the top view and some suggested tree placements, although this is not a final linkage plan. The park designer does have some suggestions for trees would go and then just in general shrubs and such, but that would need to be solidified. Okay, so these are the slides that the designers submitted and those are also included in your packet. She was laying things out on the park to make your eye travel through the park and then stop at the vegetation at the back corner to enlarge in the park. So some of the previous designs just read your eye stop right at the beginning of the park. Her intention was to make you look further through the park, making it seem like a larger space. And she's placed trees, as I said, she has some suggestions for locations of trees, also to carry your eye through the park. Appreciate. Let's see where she's got there. The monument, she's placed in another direction so that when you are driving down, as we saw, you will look at the park and you will see the veterans monument area and it will be the main focal point coming down the road from College Street. And then the trees and shrubs that she suggested that we have shrubs for privacy along the fence lines of the adjacent property owners. And to encourage, she says a ground cover or bulbs or both in front of the veteran monument, just to add color there. And that she suggests that we make sure of our adequate trees for shade and that the trees along the parking strip that she has suggested would be park trees and street trees so that they can serve a dual purpose. I also wanted to point out, sorry, the larger tree that is at the front is intended to be a memorial tree for the property. It's a weird. This is more like what the pavilion will look like. It does have a roof, but she put that in there so that you could see the play equipment that she showed is a suggestion. The colors are not what she suggested. She suggested low profile play equipment that you can see through in very subdued colors that will blend into the background. And there's also a swing that you can see there at the park, but that's just her suggestion that she could fit in that area. We have not worked with a playground designer yet to see what will fit there and what's feasible, but those types of equipment, she did suggest several types of equipment that would fit in there. But the key to her was to create that separation. She worked very hard to create separation from the memorial and the play area, which was set back more in that it be not the focal point of the park. Okay, so that is what I have for slides and for the questions.
Councilor Housen?
First, I know that there was a beautiful big old tree that had to be removed. And Commissioner Burnardini had asked me about it and this was Kevin Fear's comment to that. He said, we sent a couple of employees out to trim down the dead wood and Chris, Chelsea, myself and park architect were out looking at the proposed park. Lish was finding a bunch of rot within the tree limbs. He was trimming and looked further into it. It appeared to be rotted deeper. At that point, it was determined that it was a hazard and Chris had to go and bring it down since we were already there. He had the equipment on hand to do it. It actually broke my heart. I thought it was a really neat looking tree and thought of it for the Heritage Tree Program. So I just wanted to be aware that there are times that we have to remove trees, but it's not. And my request is, I know that councilor and Roddy and myself have spoken to people at the farmer's market who are very interested in having universally accessible play equipment. And this seems like an ideal opportunity to put in one or two pieces of equipment that any child and any disabled adult carrying bridge can access. So I would like to introduce a motion to that.
And the motion is to ensure that the equipment is accessible?
Yes.
Because we have a motion made by councilor Housen, seconded by councilor Johnny.
Just so you know, the circular equipment that has been suggested, I think she had two different different types that she suggested, both were very inclusive. One of them, I believe it's the one that was shown on the slide. I looked at that equipment and it, it is, it's very accessible. It's very easy for someone to, to get a child in and out of. So that might be an option.
I would also suggest that you consider this leave all the new winds today. I would also suggest that you consider this to be all the new ones today. It's just a formality is, is implementing a fully accessible playground. So I would encourage you to go and look at that online because the equipment is a little bit corporate. And that equipment was also funded by Public Services.
Thank you. So we have motion on table. Any further discussion, comments, question about that?
So accessibility is specific to the playground equipment. Is there other accessibility questions?
Are there any other accessibility issues?
No, the park is actually been made to be very accessible. We've changed the pavilion design so that you can roll right in and out of it. It's at friends level. There are quite a few benches which will, we hope to make as accessible benches. And they are all in concrete area. And then even by the pavilion, there's a bench with an additional area next to it. If someone were in a chair and wanted to sit next to someone in the chair, not on the bench. So yes, they, they did take that.
So when, just a question, I'm just thinking of different situations, but someone who's blind, do we have provision to put braille of pretty signs or written?
I don't know about that at this point in the process, but you know, we can look at that. We're, at this point, we're not that far into the design process, right?
But I think braille would be good if you do anything right.
Councilor Darni.
Just to clarify, because he said that it was a lot more accessible, you know, I guess. But the, the yellow marks on here where the playground equipment is, is that like, is it bone stuff then? Or is that like sand or just thinking about it in terms of like, if you have someone who has trouble moving and in sand or in bark or then it kind of defeats the purpose of having. Is that the old playground features on that, right?
It is actually engineered wood fiber, which is readily used. It does compact. And I'm not going to say that it is as smooth as if you're in concrete, but it is designed for that. It has to go through an approval process to consider it injured or better for playgrounds. The surfaces that you're speaking of are very neat because of the bends, they have a lot of them. They're very expensive. The taxes and bend, you know, yeah, is there to facilitate that. But they, they are very, very expensive. But this is material that's replaced, you know, it has to be a certain depth and it compacts to be an easier surface for people to access and not long. And it specifically, it really won't be an issue in wheelchair. Like its parts. Yeah, if you go to, I mean, most parks, I believe that our parks have that currently. So when it's, when it's new, sometimes it's loose, but it does compact. Well, it still retains that cushioning that it has too. So it's, it's kind of a difficult combination to, to compact enough where you can roll on it. But it's also provided out of the cushioning for fall protection.
So then like right here, we're this bench on pavement with wheelchair spots. I, I don't know how narrow or wide this area is, but just looking at the pavement and like someone trying to maneuver to that spot. Can you say that they could adequately do so?
Yeah, you can go through the pavilion at that ground level. So there will be one or two picnic tables, but they'll still be adequate access. And the designer did, she takes into account all of the ADA access. That's a huge part of what she does. And she's really great to work with. She, it's very important to her. So she did make sure she's the one who suggested having that space next to the bench, which I thought was a great idea.
Good question here. So this is the conceptual design. What's the process from here moving forward?
So the process would be to put out an invitation to bid. And that's going to be to get a contractor to get final construction plans. We have to get the engineered construction plans so they can start digging and putting in the hardscaping and such. That has to go through, you know, a process of putting out bids that will come back to council to order a contract. And one of the things that we're looking for in a contractor is someone who will help facilitate the, the groups and organizations that want to volunteer and donate products for those projects. That's going to be something that we put in. It's not just going to be who has the lowest bid. It's going to be who has the lowest bid and who will, is willing to work with the volunteer groups. Because there are a lot of groups in the area. We, I think you saw when we applied for the grants, that there was our OTC, the Mary's River American Legion. There's been church groups. Sorry, we have a church group out there. I think on Veterans Day doing a cleanup. So a lot of groups want to volunteer their time and we want a contractor who's on board with that.
Thank you, Councilor Darni.
That's awesome. For people who aren't necessarily involved in those groups currently and still want to help out with these everything involved, does the city have an email list serve that they send emails out to so that they can be involved?
Yeah, I think when it gets to that point, there, there will be, there are some particular projects like the pavilion, which is going to be a volunteer project with the Timber Framers Guild. That's what we're looking to. We hope that's what it's going to be. We can't promise that when it comes into cost, but that's what we're looking for. So that would be something that we can put like in the newsletter about volunteer opportunities coming up or go down and install a lot of people, especially people in the neighborhood, like together to put that in. And it helps give them some ownership also over the park. So yes, I think that we'll be putting out those opportunities. So we have groups that specifically will come forward and say, I want to work on this, but there will be some things that are possibly just about to be understood.
Yeah, just also wanting to make sure that like for those people who are interested in it, but then like they didn't get, they didn't know about it until too late that they still can participate in that specific item. But thank you.
That I'll make, I'll move that the city council approved the conceptual design for Paul Cochran Veterans Memorial Park project. We had a motion on table, oh, demand to make, oh, just, just for the access vote part, I apologize. Nobody seconded that yet. I said, nobody seconded my.
Oh.
I was suggesting everybody second my motion. So with that, we have motion table.
I'm not opposed to the motion. I, the accessibility obviously is very, very important. With the veterans memorial side of this, I do think this park's going to attract people from outside of this immediate neighborhood. My, I'm just visualizing this. I think of the majority of people coming from outside the neighborhood to that park are going to be coming from the memorial, not necessarily the park features. The neighborhood itself is going to mostly utilize the park features. It is a neighborhood park. It's not like a community park that's going to have a large spread of people. So I guess my caution would just be those play structures do tend to be quite a bit more expensive. And so as long as the understanding is that we're going to incorporate some amenities as opposed to like all of the play amenities are all going to be except highly, you know, a hundred percent accessible, that's going to make the costs significantly more. And those efforts may be better served than like a mill pond park or looking to make improvements at City Park or one of our more community parks that have got a much bigger footprint and people are coming from outside of the area to utilize those. So I just, I'm trying to keep a check on costs a little bit and just recognize that there's a balance maybe there.
Your point is well taken, but I think it's very important that we take this step forward. People who have made this point for the past couple of years, and this is really the first time we have an opportunity that is done. And I don't think this park, given this size of it, is probably going to have more than maybe two pieces of play equipment. Two, three, you know, it's not going to be a big play area. And I think it's very important that we include accessible equipment. And just because it's focused on this neighborhood, does that mean there aren't any people there that need accessible equipment? That seems to be.
Well, so if I can, maybe I didn't state this part, so I'll clarify that. The, the memorial aspect of this has been designed to attract people from outside of the area. The park isn't necessarily designed to attract people from outside. So one of the concerns is if it's all accessible and that becomes an accessibility or an accessible park, is it going to then draw more attention to that neighborhood than you want a typical neighborhood park to attract? Again, I, I'm not opposed to it. I'm just saying there's some cautions and that happening that may be better suited for a community park that has parking, has more access, has more space, has more space for more individuals to come and utilize it. As opposed to, I'm, I'm just trying to be cognizant of this as a neighborhood park, mostly going to be used by people in that immediate area for the neighborhood use and, and having a lot of people from outside of the area coming and parking on the street and utilize that maybe more than what we're desiring. But it's just a caution. I think the motion's fine. The sentiment is, is fine. It's just.
Thank you, Councilor.
Well, I guess I just want to put it in all perspective too, that this is a very special park. I mean, the whole idea is that's a memorial park for a veteran and this land was donated by his family. And I think for me, the primary use should be a, a park that honors that, that goal reflection. I, I think having playground equipment or whatever else, it's all very well, but I would see this as being a place where veterans, people, a lot of them invite comments from you too, but would be the primary reason for this park. Then everything else would be secondary and not, I don't know, I just see it as being sort of a place you, you go, you reflect, you, you know, honor the person. And would it be possible to have, or we're going to not open that clock right now.
Councilor Darni.
So a couple of things, I originally was opposed to the idea of having play equipment here because a lot of the survey data indicated that there wasn't much support for that. And that it should be more of the memorial, the reflection, the, you know, just taking the time to honor our veterans. And then the more I thought about it and the more that I heard about how there were, you know, painstaking measures to try to separate things out because of course people are going to want to come with their families and there needs to be something for the kids to entertain themselves when they can no longer. And I'm just thinking about myself, like as a kid, when, you know, you can barely hold still for, for very long and you need to let out that energy in some way. And that's of course just one, one example. There's plenty of other reasons as to why it would be nice to have a, a equipment of some play equipment of some kind for, for young people. But the beauty of accessible equipment is that it's accessible, so that means anyone can use it. And I think that is the important thing. And just, this is a great opportunity to be able to begin that journey for the city to, you know, start investing in our, in people who like could benefit from that, who don't really have the opportunity to play the, with the equipment that we have now.
I'll just, no, I don't think there's much opposition to this myself, but the council.
I would just ask the council to remember that this was the only one's child. And I would think if I were a veteran going there and I wanted to remember those who had been lost. This is certainly a space for that, but something that I would find very comforting would be having children play. Recognizing that this would go on, that this is a space that everyone can enjoy. And it's not purely for reflection, although that's clearly the primary focus.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Councilor Bissell.
We were presented with this part idea. And at that time, there was conversation about in front of that presentation, as I recall. I'm not sure if we're now debating whether or not we're having play equipment. But in the instance that presumably we are, it does seem appropriate to move forward with more accessible equipment. As we start to do this, it shouldn't be a major expense since there are a small amount of pieces of equipment. I certainly don't think we're going to have major traffic issues just because it happens to be accessible equipment. And definitely support the idea that we follow through with this. I do want to follow up with Mr. Taylor. Had asked questions about what veterans organizations were involved and who are reached out to. I'm wondering if we could get a report on that information also.
Yes, I don't, I don't know that I have all the information. I haven't been involved with projects since, since 2019. But I know the American Legion has supported it. They discussed it at a number of meetings. The original concept designs that we're floating around were coming from discussions that they were having at their meetings, which are also public meetings. This, the park idea and sharing the design was being done. And input was being asked for, has been shared with the county veterans groups, with all such groups. But primarily we focused on the Mary's River group because it is the local veterans group, my understanding is. But correct me if I'm wrong, that is the primary veterans group that is full on the base. And so that group has had to be back, there is an updated letter of support for this particular design. They have also given letters of support just to get the grants, just in general for the park and the project. And they've been involved in, and the house was coming down. They were on site. So I think that there's been involvement since this property was donated, the house was removed. There have been several projects with veterans groups at the park prior to the last year.
Thank you, Councilor Nelson.
Is this the final design for the monument that is listed here with just three pillars and the flagpole behind and the eagle? Is that the final?
It's general, that's based off of what we discussed when we came in June. We do, moving forward with this, will have, you know, the granite people look at it and, and give suggestions on how to actually make this a reality that will, you know, redesign, rebuild in a similar fashion. But it's, it's pretty similar to what we looked at. The designer did scale it slightly different because she again was doing the visual aspect of it and how it relates. And I think we talked about that at the June meeting, but the scale of it maybe adjusted slightly, maybe changed just a little bit better in the park and what purpose it is.
So no engravings or?
It will have engravings, right? This is just a gray. Yes, so the, the seals will be on there and then I think there's a plaque. And the park advisory board did ask that a flag be placed on the, on the spot as well. So there's always a flag there since there won't always be flags there.
Councilor Darni.
One last thing, to someone, I can't remember who it was, but a community member had made the suggestion of having some sort of information available for like if you are, that are, you're seeking resources or whatever. It was having a list of organizations and phone numbers and, or websites or something like that, having that available. So I just wanted to bring that suggestion forward as something to consider.
So which even late, I think we should maybe vote on this one of motion. So all in favor of making the playground, any playground equipment in here in this park accessible, as stated by Councilor Causey? And please raise your hand in sky. Okay, motion carries unanimously. With that, I'll make a motion that we approve the conceptual design for the Paul Cochran Veterans Memorial. With that, I'll make a motion that we approve the conceptual design for the Paul Cochran Veterans Memorial Park Design. So. Any further discussion?
Uh, just a big thumbs up to Chelsea and the Park Advisory Board for all the work on this. They've done a really nice job and our consultant Anita Van Asperd's done a really good job and, um, be dismayed if I didn't, uh, mention Eric Neiman as well. Bruce Mayer's put a lot of time and effort into this and continues to rally the troops, pun intended, and, uh, keep the veterans' organizations, business owners, contractors interested in this project. So I, again, I'm really excited to take the next step, get a contractor on board that's going to work with those volunteers and groups that really keep this a community project. Um, so kudos to Chelsea and her team for keeping this going.
So all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye, motion carries unanimously. Um, yes, thank you all. I really appreciate the effort, um, that you put into the park. I'm really excited to skip more forward. With that, I wanted to bring, first of all, um, it's eight thirty-five. Wanted to get everyone, or nine thirty-five, want to get everyone's, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we continue city council meeting until, um, nine fifty-five at this point.
Second hold.
So, um, all in favor, please raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, thank you all. Appreciate you being here. I just think it's, I'm, I'm going to bring this, we're talking about the policy discussion on non-remunstance agreements, and I just wanted to, um, get a motion on the table to, that we direct city staff not to accept any further non-remunstance agreements until after the city council can have a comprehensive, a conversation, um, about them. And if I get a second, I will explain. So, um, I think that knowing that the city, the council in the past, um, has decided not to move forward with LIDs, that anytime we get an non-remunstance agreement put in before us, it appears that right now we may be obliged to accept them, and I don't really understand why that is exactly. But I think that the city staff, um, if the city council gives direction that, you know, we need to pause on these things until we can actually give them further consideration, um, then the city staff can say, no, we're not going to accept that right now per the city council's, um, direction. I, it feels that we are, um, by not doing that, we're putting the city, making the city liable for potentially covering costs that would be imposed by a developer who signs an non-remunstance agreement but does not, uh, but for some reason the council chooses not to pursue an LID, then the city would end up having to pay for that, which therefore means all the, all the residents and homeowners will need to do that to their taxes. Jim, is that accurate-ish? Um, please correct.
I have my, uh, municipal code, uh, with me, so give me just a minute to open that up.
And should I give you that measure? Can I take a comment from the council before you?
Absolutely.
Councilor Biscay.
So I'm just curious first about the language obliged to accept non-remunstance agreements. My understanding, and so I'm looking for clarity here, is that non-remunstance agreements were a mechanism that the city to somebody that maybe bought a piece of property or was pulling a permit, so I wonder if we can get, I didn't get the sense that that was, I, I got the sense that was city to property owner, not property owner to the city, asking the city to accept them. So a clarification on that, but also, um, I'm concerned about the language here because non-remunstance agreements and developments in the issue statement, there's, they're not related. Like developments, they have to be approved, they would go through a process, and a number of other code compliances and criteria evaluations. My understanding is non-remunstance agreements were specific to a single piece of property, committing a call to permit, or somebody that just purchased the property and that type of thing. So I'm looking for clarity on what a non-remunstance agreement is. And what would trigger a non-remunstance agreement? I think it's essential to how we evaluate this agenda item summary.
Jim or Chris, do you have any?
Well, my recommendation on there is to kick this to the Public Works Committee and discuss non-remunstance agreements and other revisions and all that. So they were the mayor's talking about, it's kind of a temporary
Temporary pause.
Pause while that discussion's taking place, because I think there is merit for more discussion and alternatives and language in the code. And I know that someone's going to hash out tonight, but I, I do think, um, you know, the mayor, if if, uh, Mr. Brewer's on board, I think the mayor's request for a pause at the time being, it may create some problems for specific property owners that traditionally we've leaned on non-remunstance agreements for, but we can look at alternatives. We can do payment in lieu of, we can do liens, we can do secured security account, savings accounts, there's other tools we can use that don't have the same uh, consequences that we've seen come up with the non-remunstance agreement. So that's for the motion that's been presented, but also with a strong recommendation that Public Works Committee review this, um, in, in more depth.
Sure.
Get a clarification, because if we're talking about making a motion to pause non-remunstance agreements as a mechanism that we have, I still need, I would like to have a question answered, which is if, let's just take the city block report, for example, if the street on one twenty North Fourteenth Street, let's take a two hundred and nineteen North Fourteenth Street, because I believe that's unapproved. If they're pulling, uh, they are putting in an application as it reads, or they're pulling a permit, if you use the design review on number three, or any number of examples, would two hundred and nineteen North Fourteenth Street be subject to non-remunstance agreements? And will this cause harm or burdens or barriers to that property because we are advancing a pause on a tool that we have used for decades in the city without really understanding what that pause might mean to say somebody at two nineteen North Fourteenth Street? It seems very premature when we don't know what those implications might be for a tool that we've used literally since the seventies.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, the answer is, is yes, it would take away a tool that the city has traditionally used.
So for these folks on North Two, North Fourteenth Street, would their application trigger a lien or a payment in lieu of, or a whatever? Whatever else you said.
Yeah, you'd want to come up with some other mechanism of having the property owner pay for the street improvements at some point in time.
I, I think that's the complication right now, and maybe a good reason to send this issue to the Public Works Committee is, um, the mechanism is a non-remunstance from a local improvement district. With the idea that public infrastructure is going to be put in place at a later date through a local improvement district. If that's not how we're going to do the public improvements, then, and the non-remunstance agreement satisfies the public improvement requirements, I'm not going to do local improvement districts, then there's a finance gap. How are you going to pay for those things? And that's a, that's a pretty big question. It's got to be addressed. I, I'm concerned about saying a pause because I think, I think the code, although I'm slowly searching here, has some places where non-remunstance agreements are allowed. And I don't think that the council can just say, well, don't do that right now if the code says it. So I think we, we may need, uh, ordinances to allow that. And, uh, I'm sorry, you and I talked about it, and I meant to be prepared for that, and I'm just not.
I believe the language is the city may
I, I
extend a non-remunstance agreement if, certainly if the two, three conditions are met, but it is.
I think there's a different one for, for different things too. So I, I think there's a, a commercial one for parking. There's some other, other references where we want to be cognizant that we're, we're not, uh, uh, basically saying to somebody, um, our code will allow you to meet a requirement of development in this way, and uh, we're not going to let you do that right now, but we don't have a substitute for you. I think we've got to have the substitute in place.
And so my concern is that, I thought our code said may, but then, two months ago, Mr. Knutson got another non-remunstance agreement or something approximately, because he said that we could not not do it.
Yeah, that was a different issue. That was, that was because he believed that he'd gotten, uh, planning, uh, land use approval for his development that was not a land use approval, but that was the discretion there was, or discrepancy.
It looked like the discretion had been used.
Right.
But, that, that's a little different issue, but it's a related issue, and uh, I, I think it's worth, um, uh, getting good information, which I'm sorry, I don't, I don't have for you tonight. Um, I thought I could pull up things quickly.
Okay, Councilor Lo.
I just think it's imperative that we start talking about this, because this whole time that we spent with the the eleventh street thing, and we got down to the point that nobody really wanted to pay for it. They all wanted to find ways that, uh, they, they didn't have to pay for whatever, so it flopped or failed out. So we still have infrastructure that needs improvement. We got to figure out a way how we're going to pay for it, who's going to pay for it. And I think you got to start with, I think Public Works is fine. Have it come to committee, put some energy into it, bring something back to the whole council for more discussion. I think that's the way, and we need to start doing it, which we, I don't want, was any more time while we we're, let's get doing something.
Councilor Kazi.
Um, and that's why I'm saying your motion to me that, uh, topics be taken out by the Public Works Committee at the next possible meeting to equip non-remunstance agreements, infrastructure, platforms, persons.
I have a motion to amend.
Clarify, are we still talking about pausing non-remunstance agreements before that amendment? Are we taking Councilor Brewer's?
She's suggested an amendment, so I don't, then she has a second, so.
But what I'm asking is, is that in addition to your?
I'm getting ready to work that out now. So, um, so I had, the, the original motion was to, uh, temporarily not accept non-remunstance agreements and direct us, direct city staff to do that. Um, and then your amendment was?
To take this broader center to Public Works Committee.
Basically to, um, not do the amendment that I stated, but to follow up with that, to send it to Public Works as kind of stated.
So it sounds to me like your motion is not viable based on council input.
We should still vote on it.
May I ask, um, was there a second to Councilor Kazi's motion?
Councilor Nielsen.
Thank you. And did you say it was the next, I, I think it should be, did you mention it at the next public?
Next possible.
Next possible. That would be helpful to have that, that information in there.
Uh, any council?
Yeah, I think both of those things should be done, and I think that we could amend your original motion by saying, whenever possible, not issue a monstance agreement. That should allow our city attorney to find out when it's not possible for us to not issue, uh, a monstance agreement. Because I think the sentiment is there that we don't want to do this anymore, knowing that the chances we're actually going to fall through on something that would kick in, the non-remunstance agreement is very, very small. Um, so I'm in favor of that. I'm also in favor of Public Works or whoever doing a big deeper dive on this.
Yeah. Good, thank you. And Councilor, um, Councilor, so we have, we can only do one amendment at a time.
Exactly.
And so Councilor Andrade had her.
Oh, I was going to amend that.
Excuse me, I'm, I'm falling behind here.
Sure.
Did you make a motion to amend?
No.
I did not. But you did not.
I suggested that one could be made.
That would be a motion to amend, a motion to.
So we're going to avoid that, we're going to avoid that at all costs right now, but Councilor Bisco.
So, um, just a clarification again. First, I think it's great that this is maybe going to be discussed. I know we looked at some of these things with the Public Works Committee last year. Um, but also the non-remunstance agreement and the failure of the LID are exclusive of one another. They didn't have enough signed non-remunstance agreements. Outside of Heatherland, which had its own conditions of approval and didn't really belong in an LID in the first place. So when we look at just North Eleventh Street, the non-remunstance agreements were really a moot point. There was a lot of discussion about them. It didn't influence the numbers enough to where we, we could have moved forward with that LID, we opted not to. And so, you know, just to be clear, I think identifying with this council and explaining and being very clear about what exactly non-remunstance agreement is, where it lies, the barriers that might exist to like a host on two nineteen North Fourteenth Street, depending on what might trigger a non-remunstance agreement. But also the fact that it didn't have a bearing on the local improvement district decision, because we didn't have enough that would have mattered in.
Yeah, I'll just, technically, we could have done a half of that street, and so we, we could have, it could have functioned, but regardless, so we have a motion on table. It's a little bit convoluted right now. We have an amendment on, we have an amendment on table, so.
For the release of a motion to amend, which was to take the broader topics to the Public Works Committee as soon as possible, including non-remunstance agreements, infrastructure, funding sources, and local improvement districts.
And was that in addition to the temporary hold, or was that in lieu of?
I think it would be to be in U S based, some of the comments I've heard.
And so.
So it is, if you can amend it. Yeah, it's good.
It's a remove and replace amendment.
Gut stuff, it's a, uh, amendment by substitution, technical term.
Okay. And so let's, uh, go ahead and vote on the amend, amendment that was made.
So again, for clarification purposes,
Yep.
what is the amended recommended option?
So we can ignore everything I said, because this is in lieu of.
Okay. Um, that the non-remunstance agreements, infrastructure, funding, services, and local improvements districts, we discussed by the Public Works Committee as soon as possible.
And so that's, that's what we're voting on.
Yes.
So, Councilor Lo?
I'll second that.
Oh, well, it's already been seconded, so.
Would we?
We're just confirming what.
You can vote on it in a second.
Would we want to add and bring a recommendation back to City Council?
Certainly.
That's a given, let's not confuse.
We're just kind of discussing. It's my free time.
Okay, so, okay, uh, Councilor Bisco.
I'd like to add that this come back to a work session and not a, um, traditional agenda item summary where we're trying to lump in some very extensive information with just segments of council. Which has been a historical challenge, where we don't have that opportunity for the council that's not on the committee to get a full understanding of a topic described, which is a work session, a work session might be more appropriate than just a recommendation on an agenda item summary.
Okay, thank you.
Let's support that. I think it's a way enough topic that deserves.
And so what I'm going to suggest is that we vote on the motion that's in hand, and then we make a second motion for that. Because that had, that motion hasn't been made, okay. Um, all in favor of passing the motion as stated by Councilor Kazi? Please raise your hand and say aye. Okay, all opposed, please your hands in the air. Um, all abstentions? I can't see how. Right, so motion carries six to one.
That was the motion to amend, so now.
And you have further comment, John? Okay, so now we're just basically voting on the same thing. So, uh, all in favor of passing the motion as stated?
Um, no.
Or as amended?
Well, weren't, aren't we going to amend now?
We can pass this and then do a new motion.
Oh, not amended.
This is, yeah, this is, uh.
Keep it simple.
Yes, so all in favor of carrying the motion as amended, please raise your hands back. Opposed? Uh, motion carries six to one, so. Motion carries six to one. So.
I'd like to move that the city not issue any more non remonstrance agreements as practicable. Until a resolution has been brought forth from the public works.
Second. Any further discussion on that? Counselor.
Well, just from counsel Brewer's perspective.
We can have that information.
All in favor of passing the motion as stated, please raise your hands. Say aye. All opposed, please your hands in the air. Motion carries five to two. And then did you want to make, counsel Bisco, do you want to make a motion about the work session?
I move that we bring the recommendations from public works. On also a positive slate of topics back to a work session, also a work session.
Okay, so a motion made by counsel Bisco, seconded by counsel Lehman. Any further discussion? All favor of motion, please raise your hands. Say aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for that conversation. Yep, so. I'd like, I'd really like to just do this first reading on this next thing. We continue the council meeting until five after ten. So. So we have a motion made by counsel Low and seconded by counsel. I'm sorry, counsel Cosi, it's getting late. Counselor Andrade.
I'd like to note that I made a request to be able to give a report.
Request noted. We'll have to ask council if we get this done quickly and we can go have five more minutes. But all in favor of going till five after ten, please raise your hands. Say aye. Any opposed? So motion carries six to one. With that, we have a first reading of.
This is ordinance number.
Eight, six, seven, eight, seven, two.
Eight, six, nine.
Eight, sixty-nine.
This is ordinance amending the municipal code. Article two flood damage prevention of chapter eighteen point five five overlay districts.
That we have a roll call? Or.
Asking question.
Yep. Got many hats.
So you're also.
Yes. We would get that from FEMA.
So it's not something that someone involved in the decision.
They're going to notify FEMA of a potential issue or concern and FEMA will request it of us.
So when you go ahead with the roll call.
Just got brought in. Catherine Bisco. Ruth Cosi.
Yes.
David Low.
Yes.
Theresa Nielsen.
Yes.
Charles Jones.
Yes. Okay, excellent. And with that. You can have council reports and then we'll go into executive session. Counsel Andrade.
The library has had a webinar series. They're recorded, so I highly recommend people coming out about. And I'd like to, our Veterans Day event that was. Planned by Eric Newman and supported by the city as well as many other. Organizations was awesome. It was till last Wednesday. The event was recorded. Highly recommend people take a look at it. I believe the, the link is on the city's website. If not there, then definitely the Facebook page. On that note, Eric sent an email. Saying that, so G J Corbett, he's the last living triple Michael. One of the all black representatives from the five hundred fifty fifth. Group of people who smoke jumped. I don't know, military friend, I apologize. And during World War Two. And so anyway, he turns a hundred years old this Friday on November twenty fifth. And Rena Allen from our inclusivity committee made a one hundred birthday, one hundredth birthday. Card for him. It is on the counter in Flora City Hall until the end of the day. Tomorrow. So if anyone wishes to sign the card, including community members, please stop by and sign it. And thank you again to Xena for sharing her artistic talents to create a beautiful card. In honor of J J Corbett's military service in the state of Oregon and his one hundredth birthday. And then also I had the vice response. Report summit. Or presentation slides sent to all. Time to over any of, any of it, but I'm under the impression the next steps are. That they will be creating an actual report and that we may be seeing that council and there'll be more discussion on that. And then also through my email this morning, I had requested that. I made a couple of requests for information to be sent to the council. About my questions regarding the most concussing updates. So hopefully that will get added to the meeting packet. That'll be all.
Thank you. Counselor Cosi.
I just wanted to thank counsel Andrade for sending those materials out. I actually had a little bit of time this weekend. Yay for.
Then. No further comment. That we can go ahead and go into executive session. And. We're going to discuss, well, we're going to be discussing real property transactions and I will read this. Statement. The Flora City Council now meeting executive session for the purpose of discussing real property transactions and consultation with. Legal counsel concerned about legal rights and duties regarding current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. The executive session is held pursuant to O R S point nine two point six six zero. To E and H, which allows the council to meet an executive session to discuss these discussions. Representatives of the news media and designated staff. And other designated persons shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience must leave the room. Representatives of news media are specifically directed to report on any deliberations during the executive session except. To state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No final decision may be made in the executive session. At the end of the next session, we will return to open session and welcome. Any waiting audience back into the room. I will recommend. I will remind this council members and the staff that the confidences in this executive session belong to the council's body and not to individual members. These confidences should be disclosed if the city council has a body of proof such a disclosure. If a member or a staff person does not believe that he or she can maintain these conferences, then I would invite. That member or staff person not to participate in the executive session. Thank you. That. Counselor Bisco. Thank you.
Okay, so this is, are we going to do the litigation one first?
Sorry, just.
Oh, Ms. Pratt. Oh, hi, Catherine.
Hi, I just want to point out, we're still live.